Could change the name plate, but you can't read it from back there anyway.
You all swap them out?
Yeah.
Do your...
I guess I should.
You won't leave them?
I'll leave his here.
Leave him guessing.
She walks.
Always just leave him guessing.
Oh, yes, they do.
It's cute to have that.
So, I seen it today.
Well, man, the three kids.
Yeah.
Oh.
I don't know what she... You look wore out for that busy day. You look like you dragged it in.
I think it said that they weren't insured.
How are you?
Uninsured.
Missed you Monday.
Sorry about that. I didn't speak all day afterwards.
You thought it was Tuesday.
You even called me and there's nothing in my brain didn't... Nothing fired.
You're okay.
I was in the throes of my tax filings.
Cooper. You're gonna speak tonight, sign in. You have, you have, you have five minutes you can address. You have five minutes you can address city council with whatever you want.
Cooper Hudson Love, he's a sophomore. At high school. His mother owns Ohio.
What's your, what's your two last names, Cooper what? Hudson Love.
Jacob's a sophomore. He all grows up.
Cooper Hudson Love, sixteen year old man. Who is interested in city government.
Everybody's taller than me.
Not strange enough.
Just like this, all of a sudden, they're both taller than you now.
Didn't he just have a birthday?
Yeah, he just turned fourteen.
Thank you.
Goodness.
Jacob sixteen. They're both taller than me.
Mr. Hayes.
I used to carry in every morning when they'd bring over. Said you'd have to carry me now.
That's just not fair, is it?
No, it just seems so. Glad to see him grow up, but you hate to see him grow up.
Yeah. I don't really know that I need this.
Mr. Clerk, are we live?
Are we missing Josh?
We are missing Josh. Are we live?
Yes.
Thank you. As soon as Mr. Hayes comes up. We all good? Don't even sit. Call the meeting to order. If everyone would please stand. We'll have the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. McDaniel's followed by a moment of silence. I'm asking Mr. McDaniel's to do this in honor of his son who gave his life for the country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Eads.
I'm here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Mr. Hitt.
Here.
Ms. Jackman.
Here.
Mr. McDaniel's.
Here.
Mr. Stahl.
Present.
Ms. Traynor.
Yes.
President Peters.
Moving on, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes? And if so, is there any additions or corrections to the minutes that need to be made? Hearing none, all in favor of accepting the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, motion carries. We have no public hearings tonight. Do we have any communications and announcements, Mr. Clerk, that I'm not aware of?
None.
Thank you. We do have two people signed up for audience concerns, excuse me. If you'll please step up to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. I'm not so sure the microphone's on. And if it is, I can't hear you.
Nancy Drenning, 169 East High Street.
Hello, Ms. Drenning.
Hi.
You have five minutes to address city council.
Okay, hi, I was back, I was here about a month ago with the issue of our neighbor who is breeding beagles out right next door to us. And actually Connie has, gets the brunt of it, because I have the barking. So Steve Hume and Rich have been working with this. I guess, was he actually served something? I think he...
I believe he was served with some papers, if memory serves me correctly. And I think there were some charges.
Okay, so, nothing has changed, really. That's why. These dogs just bark and bark, and they are home. They hear these dogs barking, the entire neighborhood hears these dogs. And he, nothing has really, except, I, I, I'm sorry. It did change, there was one huge kennel that was right outside our bedroom window. So he does not put a dog in there anymore, although it still has food and water in the house. So that could change by the minute. So we just don't know where we go from now. Do we continue to file complaints? Do we call the police? It's for us to deal with it daily, it, we just...
I can't even go outside without the dog barking, and that's my backyard, and that's the biggest part in my yard.
And she gets the overflow of the hay and the dog stuff, and it's just...
And I had problems with birds coming in and eating that stuff. He put it up against the fence. And I have a big tree in my backyard, and we had like twenty to thirty birds that came in.
And pooped.
And went all over my driveway, all over my car, and I have a ramp that that went all over. And I had to clean that about eight times, all three.
Ma'am, would you please state your name and address also? I don't mind that you're both out there, but we'd want you both on the record.
Okay, my name Connie Robb, and my address is 173 East High Street.
Okay, thank you.
And he lives right behind me.
Okay.
So we just don't know, do we sit and wait? But it's so hard to do that when, like even today, it was for five hours straight, barking girl's back out. She had a litter of puppies, and so now she's back out barking. And then, and there's, there's probably seven dogs there that we can see, and that's not coming, the puppies. So there's a lot of dogs in that yard. So...
He keeps two in the house and I think four outside.
And then the puppies.
And then the puppies.
So what do we do at this point?
Have you filed a noise complaint with the police?
Well, we have, but that's interesting, because they go by, if you go with the noise complaint, they won't do anything until ten o'clock. He is well aware of that, and you know what? Those dogs are quiet, sometimes ten-ten, but he does something with them. And then at between five and six, they're back out. We, so I wasn't going with the, the dog, we have barking ordinances, there are two of them. I gave the numbers last time, I'm sorry, I don't have that with me. But there are two barking ordinances that he doesn't even come close to complying with at all. And that's really what the offense is, the barking and the howling.
And then my, besides the barking on mine, it is the, him with the straw and everything, the birds eat in the food in the straw. And they're there all the time. And Steve Hume had him move it. And the birds started going away, because Steve said he couldn't do anything about the birds. And I said, well, can you do something about the food? I said, if you take that away, they'll go away. And they did slow down, but now he put it back out, I've got a pile up against the fence again. So he moved it, but then he just put it back. So he's not really listening.
I know you hate to hear this, but the best thing for the city is a paper trail. So complaint, complaint, complaint.
So go ahead and do that? Should we do it as a group or throw them in individually?
I would do them separately.
Okay.
The more, the better.
Okay.
And Steve is involved in this, so the more complaints, the better the cases for the city. When it goes to court. But, and I, and I, I hate that you're going through this and...
Well, well, then the two neighbors had another problem because he had chickens, okay? And a rooster.
They took care of that, though.
But they took care of it, okay? But...
Okay, complaints, we'll just fire off complaints every week or so, I mean...
Every time you need to fire, fire one in, fire one in. Get that paper trail, that, that just helps a lot.
But I do think you have to give it a little bit of time.
Right, but we've, actually, we started this process in February.
Okay.
So, yeah, we get, when you listen to those dogs daily barking, it's, I know, we're, so we're trying to be patient.
Yeah, we're trying to be patient, but those are dogs that he uses for going out and, what do I always say?
Hunting?
Yeah, the hunting dogs, so they got the real deep voices and loud, they're real loud, and then he's got one that screams.
That was with the dog collar, but I don't think they got the dog collar anymore. I think he took that off.
So...
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay.
We'll send off emails, I know Chuck and Wayne will do. Okay, good, that's what we want, thank you.
And if you need to contact me, you got my number, call me or text me, however you want.
My middle of the night ones, I've had it.
Right. Kind of a late night person sometimes.
I'm done, so I keep trying to be patient, and then I just...
Okay.
Have you talked to the law director at all? Have you talked to the law director at all?
Um, we have not, no, she's been...
I talked to her, I talked to the law director Tuesday and advised her that I've been conversing back and forth with you, and the situation hadn't gotten any better. And she advised me Steve's involved in it.
Okay.
And that there might be other charges coming.
Okay.
Well, the thing is too, he wanted to talk to me, she was in the yard with me, we were talking. And I went over to the fence and I thought, well, he wants to talk it out or something. He started screaming, calling me names.
All over the place, yes. So we can't speak to him, we tried to talk about it, that didn't work. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all we had listed for audience concerns, is there anybody else that came in late that needs to address city council? Okay, thank you very much. Moving on. Move on to committee reports. Start with Mr. McDaniel's.
On the eighth, I attended public service and public safety. I've got a, two reports from public service, sanitation and street maintenance, and then one from the fire EMS from public safety. Started with sanitation. They're talking about starting to charge for yard waste pickup at the curb. And maybe increasing the curb assist price. And increasing the fines for residents putting trash in recycle bins. And they're talking about getting a new ticket shack to put out there so people quit driving back here dumping for nothing and leaving. And then I've got, uh, street maintenance. He is one busy guy. Met with the engineer about the Garfield Storm Sewer. And talking to Mid-Ohio about water repair on West Center Street. Storm sewer repairs on South Walnut. That's all we got from street maintenance. I'm going to fire EMS and the public safety meeting. Next public service meeting will be the thirteenth of May at five o'clock, next door here. And our chief said, um, he had departmental EMS training, return of spontaneous circulation through Ohio Health. Departmental EMS training was canceled through Madison Health. And then departmental fire training, ladder training, hosted several students for ride times for tolls. Performed several fire safety inspections, completed annual aerial and ground ladder testing. Completed annual station generator preventative maintenance. Several members attended hazardous materials incident. And they met with insurance services organizations for public protection classification. And the next public safety meeting is in the thirteenth of May, six o'clock, next door.
So I do have, I have, do have a question, when they're talking about the fees for the sanitation department, were they saying they're gonna have to bring this to council for approval?
Yeah.
Okay.
As far as I know.
Any other questions for Mr. McDaniel's? Hearing none. Mr. Hayes.
Okay, thank you. On April eighth, we had safety service meeting, had two committee members present. We received the police report from Chief Nickel. Mr. Stahl will give that momentarily. We also received a fire and EMS report from Chief Eads, which you just heard. Just a couple of notes, fire and EMS, they've had seven hundred fifty-seven runs so far this year and twelve structure fires, which is a lot for London. Under the police report, we did talk about two positions, they're called support specialist positions. These would be, if they would be approved, they would probably be two of the three dispatchers that we have, since we're transferring dispatching to the county. The chief is gonna need these people. We did talk about that, and we voted two oh to send it to the finance committee, and they did talk about it the other night. And under new business, we're still talking about the crosswalk at Park Street and Fifth Street. I've been in contact with a company in New York about speed signs to be posted along the road. These are the nice big signs that flash your speed and have red lights and blue lights that go off and on for your speeding. And so far, I've talked to this gentleman twice, and I'm trying to get a price break for us. If we'd buy, if you buy two, it's one price, if you buy four, it's a different price. If we buy six, and I'm trying to, I'm trying to get them to come down in price with us. So far, we're negotiating back and forth, so I, I don't know how it's gonna work out, but that's an ongoing situation. Under old business, we had none, and we adjourned at six thirty-two. Next meeting will be on May thirteenth at six PM, next door in the conference room.
Thank you, sir. I'll give the personnel budget and finance committee report, we met on April fourteenth. Quick overview. For the revenue for the month was two million one hundred and forty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and change. The expenses were two million one hundred and seventy-three thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Overall, the revenue for the year is nine million eight hundred and three thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That includes right at four point two million dollars of bond money we've received for the police department to get that started. The expenses have been six million eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, that was rounded for my convenience. In under old business, we'd had a discussion previously about possibly an HR specialist. We asked the auditor if she would look into that, because it's to see if Clemens Nelson offers that service, they do. So just to give you a quick update, they would offer that service, probably have someone here one day a week, every week, for HR purposes, they would be available via phone or email at other times. She didn't have a price specifically, but she knows of another city, I believe it was Whitehall, that they pay fifty-two thousand dollars a year to have that specialist at their beck and call and be there one day a week. That is less than what we would pay, or the proposed pay, and if you include benefits, that position may run eighty-five to ninety-five thousand dollars for us, that's fifty-two thousand for them. I did ask if we could just, if, if we could extend a contract with them, or if we'd have to put this out for bid, and she was gonna check into that. The municipal finance advisor, we didn't have any further information, we left that on. Under new business, we talked about the CRA, which is a community reinvestment area. And just so everybody knows what, where that is and what that is. Main Street London Collective is the group that purchased the property from thirty-six to forty-two West First Street. This is where First Street now dead ends into Oak and back up to Main Street. Part of that, about half of that is that property. They have went in, they've taken dumpsters and dumpsters and dumpsters of stuff out of there, and they intend to make this a place where there's going to be, an event space also. So they're asking for their taxes to be abated moving forward. It would only be, the abatement would be for the increase of what those taxes would be compared to what they are now. So they would continue to pay the taxes on the property taxes on what they have now currently, but they're asking for the rest of that to be abated, that has not come before council yet. I expect that to come before council at the next meeting, it was approved to go to council by a two zero vote. We discussed the, the, the police position at length. And that, the, the pay scale and the strength ordinance, we're gonna kind of lump all of those three things, and again, about the police. The, the chief asked for two positions for a clerk. He asked for a pay range was twenty-six to thirty dollars an hour, we discussed that at length, I think it was, and I did talk to the chief afterwards a little bit, and he thought the discussion was fair, and we came to, we came to a price point that we would start at twenty-three dollars an hour instead of twenty-six. The top number was left at thirty roughly, this all will come before council, and if we want to make changes to that, we can. We would have to play with the strength ordinance a little bit. And they have job descriptions, including dispatchers at this point, because they're still there, and they've taken all of this to Clemens Nelson to be looked at. So those may all come to us at the next meeting for approval. And then we just talked about the pay scale. There was a little confusion on my part about the administrative position, I thought this meant police and administrative position. We did get an email at one ten that afternoon saying that this is what the job description, the new job description for the executive administrative assistant for the city. We did not take action on that at that time, I did not have the time to look at it, and I don't believe anybody else did either. We discussed that back and forth for a while. So I offered that we could do a special meeting before the May first council meeting at six o'clock. This would be the only item we would discuss, and everybody, all the council, all the committee members are on board with that, unless there's any reason not to have that. But since you're here, Ms. Breedlove, can we add that to the agenda, please, or to the calendar, please? Okay, thank you very much. So that'll be a special meeting, May first at six PM, our next regular meeting will be May nineteenth at five thirty. That's all I have. Mr. Hitt?
Oh, I have nothing additional. Lucky you covered everything for finance committee meeting, and Brent pretty much covered everything for service committee. Lisa is gonna give the report for Parks and Recreation.
Okay. Ms. Traynor?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Mr. Stahl?
Public Safety Committee briefing from April eighth, twenty twenty-five. They closed a recent application period for an open officer position, will be continuing the selection process once the candidate list is certified by the London CSC. They are aware of the return of bids to the construction manager for the guaranteed maximum price of the building project. The federal funding is allotted to the Treasury Department and will be transferred once all the USDA requirements have been met. A groundbreaking is expected to be held in late May. We are working with MCSO and all the software provider and transition, transitioning to MCSO for dispatch services. Anticipate, we participated in the London FFA Donkey Basketball fundraiser at LHS, they won the competition. We are updating our job description for the division and seeking to create the position to support specialists within the division. This position will be salaried and worked with a variety of administrative functions, including reception of the public to the building. K-9 Cento turned four years old on Monday. Officers are completing eight hours of defensive tactics training conducted by our own instructors along with MCSO instructors this week. The training will qualify for contingent professional training credit and conducted in-house saves costs, increases working relationships with county agencies. LPD has handled four hundred fifty-nine incidents in the first quarter of twenty twenty-five, along with one thousand nine hundred seventeen calls for service, that is an increase of over two hundred of twenty twenty-four CFS. There were ninety-seven speeding violations cited, ten OMVI officers cited so far this year, with seven hundred forty-two total traffic stops resulting in four hundred sixty-nine warnings. One notable incident on three sixteen twenty-five. Officers responded to a shooting call in South Oak where the suspect ran into the residence after firing shots outside with a handgun. The suspect was arrested a short time later at his residence and charged with a felony. Officers were assisted by MCSO deputies, no one was injured in the incident. Several shots were fired in the direction of a neighboring residence, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Stahl, Ms. Jackman?
And I goofed, and I do not have the Parks and Rec notes from that meeting. I have, I have the committee meeting minutes that I wrote.
Do you have the Park and Rec?
I have the report.
You have the meeting for, that's the meeting minutes for that meeting?
Yes.
Would you like to recite from those if that was that meeting?
Well, except there wasn't really anything with Parks and Rec, thank you. Now this I can summarize, I don't know where my copy went. But we just attached their minutes to the minutes that I write for reference. So nothing was included, because he didn't speak on anything other than his minutes. The spring volleyball games are underway, and they'll wrap up the week of April twenty-first. They had difficulty scheduling everything with spring break, the steam festival at the school, and Easter weekend. They're replacing the doors to the Cowling Park restrooms this week, and they'll paint them once weather allows, thank you. They are hosting the Hoppy Hour Adult Egg Hunt this Friday, it'll be tomorrow, for adults twenty-one and over. There are more than fifteen hundred eggs that will be hidden up at Cowling Park, all sorts of prizes. And food trucks and lawn games starting at six, and the egg hunt at seven. Concerning the swimming pool, improvements are continuing there, they're putting windows in the concession area, extra chase loungers, and new flooring in the locker rooms. They're gonna host two swim meets for the Madison County Marlins this year. They are still looking for additional lifeguards, and the pool should open Saturday, May twenty-fourth. The Civics Plus software implementation is almost done, and they're hoping to launch that in the beginning of May. And they have updated the park ambassador program by showing us their description, rules and regulations. They will post something on social media soon and have applications available for anyone who may want to be a park ambassador. And that was that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have no elected city officials here, were you given a report to bring? Okay.
Hey, thank you, just two notes. Tonight, Mayor Klauser and our safety services are out at the Autism Awareness Volleyball Game that happens every year. This is with our Madison County Tigers Special Olympics, and it's an absolute great time, I love that volleyball game. And then we also wanted to touch on Hoppy Hour, we're thrilled with the response, Hoppy Hour is tomorrow, starting at six PM. We have over thirty donors to the event, it has been a great community showing. We're at almost twelve hundred respondents to the event on Facebook. You might remember the Cowling Park Pumpkin Palooza, we had thirteen hundred respondents for that. So we are hopeful with the eighty degree weather and the sunshine, it's going to be quite an event, very excited.
So a question about that, I've seen your post on that, so I'm assuming at twenty-one and over, there's alcohol?
Yes.
Okay, are we licensed to do anything with alcohol?
All of the alcohol has been donated, and it's not opened, you take it home.
Okay.
And we're not putting alcohol like out in the park, you get a ticket and you redeem your ticket. So just in case like an egg is never found, a kid is not going to stumble upon, you know, like a tiny bottle somewhere. It's all tickets, that's out in public, and the tickets are redeemed.
Okay.
And when you redeem your ticket, you have to present a valid ID. And if you are an adult that just would not like the alcohol, we have other options that you are welcome to choose from.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Thank you for that explanation. Moving on to old business for our tenth reading. I'll accept a motion to read by title and number, please.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance two oh nine two four, declaring the improvement of certain real property located in the city of London, Madison County, Ohio, to be public purpose pursuant to Ohio high-rise code section five seven oh nine point four one, declaring such property to be exempt from real property taxation designated improvements that's once made will directly benefit the parcels for which improvement is declared to be a public purpose, requiring annual service payments in lieu of taxes establishing an urban redevelopment tax increment equivalent fund, authorizing the execution of a tax increment financing TIF agreement, and providing related authorizations pursuant to a high-rise code sections five seven oh nine point four one, point four two, point four three, point eight three two, and eight five.
Thank you, sir.
So right before the session this evening, I did get a call from Mr. Paul Gross. We've all been sort of waiting for the school to make a decision regarding some financing agreement, and the, this is the commercial TIF area. And essentially, the school was asking for what would amount to a municipal income tax sharing agreement for all new employee income that would exceed or equal one million dollars in any municipal, or any tax year for areas within that commercial TIF that they were not given a whole, make whole agreement, which would encompass the entirety of the commercial area. Of course, Mr. Gross was not on the school board agenda, but did attend earlier this week, had a conversation with the board about ultimately the fairness of that kind of arrangement. The school doesn't have any income expectations from purely commercial properties as it is. At this point in time, there are no anticipated residential structures to be made in that area, and an income tax sharing arrangement for new taxes in excess of one million would directly impact the city's ability to provide services within those same areas. And especially in the face of the school having its own income tax taxable to anybody that resides within the district, they would essentially, I think Mr. Gross pointed out, be double-dipping for new monies coming into that commercial TIF. At any rate, he advised that they, the superintendent gave him an opportunity to speak. They did not have the opportunity to vote on it, but he did get a call from Superintendent Kramer, I think, earlier today that said that the school ultimately has recapitulated on its request for the income tax sharing arrangement and are prepared to hold a special session in order to finalize the language in this commercial TIF so that it can be brought up for eleventh reading and hopefully adopted at the May first hearing. Did I miss anything, Wes? Okay. Okay. So I think the recommendation is just to leave it on, let the school board do their thing. They're gonna, like, we are having a special session, and should get everything ready for us by the May first meeting.
Thank you. I had a discussion with the law director this morning. She didn't have all that information, but she said that it had not, they had not taken action on it, and it was her suggestion also that we leave this on to the next meeting.
Yeah. Like I said, this was pretty much hot off the press, because I was on the phone with Paul at six twenty. So got it in right under the wire.
Okay. So we'll leave that on?
Yes, sir.
Recommendation of our law director, and also the fact that we're going to need documentation, I believe, from the school board, saying that they approve of their part of that. Okay. Moving on to third readings. I'll accept a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one twenty-eight twenty-five, a resolution authorizing advertisement for bids for personal property no longer needed for city purposes.
Yeah, this is to sell the old unreliable dura-patcher, because we got a new one and riding mower. It's no longer needed.
Okay. Just trying to get down to that. My apologies. Got to skip a long way to get down to the documentation for this one. There we go. Page thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Thank you. That's always good. That's helpful. Okay. Is there any further discussion or questions about this legislation? This is the third reading.
Make a motion to adopt it.
Second.
Second. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
One twenty-eight twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to resolution one thirty dash twenty-five, I'll accept a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty twenty-five, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to advertise for bids for trash hauling services.
And this is just to haul the trash away from the dump where we collect it? This goes out for bid, was it every two years or three? And I don't believe our current contract is up until, was it November?
Right.
Yes.
Right. And there is not an emergency clause, however, this is the third reading. Is there any further questions, comments about this before we move on to that? Okay. Hearing done. What are our wishes?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes. One thirty twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance one thirty-one dash twenty-five, I'll accept a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance one thirty-one twenty-five, an ordinance amending section two oh nine of the codified ordinances.
This is for the charge of preparing law enforcement video records, et cetera, and the calls.
It's also the third reading, so I move to adopt.
Is there any further questions or comments before we do that? Nope. We have a motion to adopt.
Second.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
One thirty-two dash twenty-five has been adopted. Moving on to resolution one thirty-four dash twenty-five, a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty-four twenty-five, determining that the establishment of the London Gateway New Community Authority will be conducive to the public safety convenience and welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community and declaring the new community authority to be organized in a body politic incorporate and defining the boundary of the new community district.
So this is the new community authority that would encompass both the residential and the commercial TIF. As we just discussed earlier, the commercial TIF is going to be held over hopefully one last time prior to adoption. And I think, Greg, you had a question on the N.C.A. agreement, which does not appear to be attached to our materials today. This is just the resolution regarding the N.C.A. So to make sure that we have all of those questions answered, there's really no harm in keeping this one on. It can't really do anything without that commercial component anyway. So if anybody else has any concerns, we can make sure we can get those addressed.
I did speak with the law director today. It was also her recommendation to leave this on.
Okay.
So we'll leave that on. Otherwise, we won't have anything to do next meeting. No, we will. I think there's a lot coming down the pike right now, so. Okay, moving on to new business. We have one item of new business, one thirty-five twenty-five, which is a resolution. I'll accept a motion to read by title and number?
So moved.
Second.
Resolution one thirty-five twenty-five, a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road assault contracts awarded in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, this is so they can get better prices on the salt, and there's a deadline to have this. They're going to need to suspend the three reading rule so they can get into the pool. There's a deadline to interrupt.
Deadlines no later than May second by five P.M. That's what's highlighted on this document.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that in form of a motion, Mr. McDaniel? Would you like to, would you like to suspend the rules?
Richard it.
I'm giving you the opportunity to do it.
Yeah, why not? We'll suspend the three reading rule.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the three reading rule.
Mr. McDaniel's?
Yes.
Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Now, before we do that, is there any further discussions about this?
Well, that was to save money.
That is to save money so we can get a better price.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Stahl, go ahead.
Moved to adopt.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Mr., oh, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Now, before we do that, is there any further discussions about this?
Well, that was to save money.
That is to save money so we can get a better price.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Stahl, go ahead.
Moved to adopt.
There you go.
I'll second it.
Mr., oh, Mr. Stahl?
Yes.
Ms. Traynor?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Hitt?
Yes.
Ms. Jackman?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
That is all of our new business.
It's seven eleven. We're going for a new league record tonight, folks.
Great. Is suspending the three readings enough for that, or does it need to be an emergency?
It has. It has the emergency clause built into it.
Okay.
It's already on there, so we've suspended and we've adopted.
All right.
We're good to go. One thirty-five twenty-five was adopted, suspended and adopted. Okay, moving on to roundtable. Let's start with Ms. Jackman at the other end today.
Well, and I don't have anything.
Okay. Mr. Stahl?
Just want to wish everybody a happy invicent Easter. That's all.
There's been a lot of emergency personnel activity on those highways, and then the seems like we've had lots of fires and things like that. We had some trees down with some storms, just, I mean, everybody stay safe out there and have a happy Easter.
The service committee meeting is May thirteenth at five o'clock in the meeting room next door, and then we'll have a special finance meeting May first before council at six, I assume, in the meeting room next door also.
Mr. Hayes?
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank all of our city employees for jobs well done. I know fire department's been busy, EMS been busy, special shout-out to them, along with police department, they've been busy. Anytime you have a shooting situation and you handle it with nobody getting hurt and everything's taken care of, that's a, that's a, that's a great ending. Good job. I appreciate all of our officers. Want to wish everybody a happy Easter. Let's remember what Easter's all about, besides the Easter eggs and the bunny. The main reason for the season is Jesus. And next safety meeting will be May thirteenth at six P.M. in the conference room next door. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Mr. McDaniel's?
I want to thank everybody for coming out and watching, and everybody have a happy Easter and stay safe. And that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Eve, I'm coming to you in just a minute, just giving you a heads-up. So I have a couple of things I'd like to address. First of all, the marathon, the London Marathon happened. They had four hundred or so runners that showed up. The London Lions, along with many other people, volunteered to help out that day. We've seen a lot of people that seem to enjoy running, and we've seen a lot more that didn't, but they stayed at it. I admire those people for doing that and running the half marathon, the full marathon, and even the five K. We weren't near the five K, so we only seen the people in the half and the whole marathon. So I didn't get to see those people at the other end of that. It does raise money for Merrimack, Merrimack Miracles. If they've, if you don't know, they're, one of their phases right now, phase two, was to build dugouts at Merrimack Park along some, with some other things, so hopefully they can get that done. Last night, there was a comprehensive plan meeting. It was an open-to-the-public meeting. I thought that the turnout was disappointing. However, there was good information that was shared last night. Those boards that were up there were, I'm going to let Eve talk about this in just a minute, a little further about all of that. So that was, that was good information to learn and see where they're going with this. This was not their final report. The final report will be coming in the future. I was asked by Marilyn Hall, and if you know Marilyn Hall, you know she's a, she's quite a spark plug, and she asked me why only two members of city council showed up to the meeting. And I said, I couldn't answer that. I didn't get an invitation specifically, and I don't know why people were there or not. She said, well, I thought that's a shame. Okay, I'll pass that on. She asked me to. However, the comprehensive plan can be, or the information therefore can be found, and we're going to turn this over to Ms. Breedlove so, so she can give us an update. So if you're watching right now, how you can go look at all of the information about the comprehensive plan that we have on the city website.
Awesome. Thank you for doing that. I put out a post on our city social media talking about this today as well. But in case anybody missed that, the city of London does have an entire webpage devoted to our comprehensive plan. So londonohio.gov, and then right on the homepage, there's the comprehensive plan button, as big as I can make it. That page includes, in the plan updates section, every meeting that has happened about the comprehensive plan, and any documents that have been handed out at any of these meetings. So the PowerPoints are on there. At one point, we did a community survey that had roughly two hundred responses, and the results from that survey are on there. You can see the past engagement opportunities that have happened, such as the survey and the previous two open houses. It tells you how to contact us and give feedback if you have updates, ideas, or things like that, who you can contact and how you can contact. It tells you who the steering committee members are, talks about the two stakeholder committees, every bit of information I could think to put on there.
Thank you. If you have any questions about this, you may contact Ms. Breedlove by calling seven four oh eight five two three two four three. I do believe that's the correct number. And if you have any questions for the administration, that's the number to call. Is there anything further from the council tonight? Anything further from the clerk tonight? I call this meeting adjourned at seven seventeen P.M. We'll see you on May first.
Yes, it's coming quickly.
You don't know where the following word goes. Fast.
Yes.
All I know is you gave everybody the opportunity to talk about whatever they wanted. If you didn't want to talk about trash hauling, you didn't have to.
I was going to come out to run, but I had, we had another funeral. I had like four funerals.
See ya.
Cooper, I think you should come up and introduce yourself to all these people. This sixteen-year-old man has an interest in city government.
Well...
Oh, he's going to walk up and shake everybody's hands. That's nice. You want to try the chair out?
Oh, I'm good. I've been in office.
This isn't my chair. You can, you can, you can sit in.
Rich Hayes. Nice to meet you. I haven't met you before.